Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the City of Kingston zoning board of appeals will now come to order. It is 6:11. My name is Brian Cafferty and I'm going to be chairing this proceeding. I'll take a moment to explain how the zoning board of appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the city of Kingston. And we perform this service to the best of our abilities on a volunteer unpaid basis. Other board members are, starting with?
Donna Martin. Mary Nigella.
Mary Nigella. There'll be a period for public comment this evening after each variance request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address with record and come up and use the sign in cheek here. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members and not other speakers or audiences. Professional demeanor is expected. Okay, first order of business. Can I get a? Motion to approve the minutes from October 13th, 2002? All those in favor? Alright. What do we, what do we think about moving Darren Barker to the front of the list? Give me with that first. Yeah, is there anybody here to represent?
They're on, they're on the computer.
They're in Texas?
Yeah.
Okay, do they want to, or can they speak? That would be Michael Rabado? Fifty Darren Barker.
Michael, can you hear us?
I, I'm here, sir.
Yes, hello, Mr. Rabado, how are you?
I'm doing well, sir. Thanks for letting us attend and bring it up to Zoom.
Did I pronounce that correctly?
It's a, we pronounce it Rabado.
Rabado, okay, Rabado it is. Okay, do you like to, I know we had this on the agenda last month and we tabled it. Give you an opportunity to, to participate in the meeting. You want to give us a little bit of an overview of what you're asking for in your application?
Yes, sir, we're, we're looking for a variance in order to take our second home there in Kingston and have it utilized while we are not there as a short term rental. Went, just a little brief history of, of how we got to where we are. When we bought the house, we had never done any kind of Airbnb or any, anything like that. We, we bought the house because both of our children live in New York State and our grandchild was, was born during COVID. And so in order to be able to spend time and support our daughter and her husband with their new baby, we bought the house. So, we, we, we looked at the city regulations at that time and it was a voluntary basis to register your property as a short term rental. We also checked the city code at that time and we did not need to, to our understanding, we did not need to classify ourselves as a hotel because we're just a two bedroom house and we don't accept more than four guests.
And it wasn't part of the regulation?
So, you know, we didn't need to register as a hotel if we understood properly. It, and in, in the meantime, um, yeah, things changed. And we had, you know, no, no opportunity, we would certainly have registered, pre-registered to get a variance. Had, had we known that it was going to play out this way, we'd, you know, our personal feeling is that it, it wasn't, it wasn't truly fair to us. This is, this is not a business for us. We're not in this business. We're, we're simply homeowners who?
We're retiring there.
Yeah, our goal is to retire there, assuming that the market ever will turn around for us. So that, that's basically in a nutshell, it's not a money making. We, we supplied our financials associated with the property and everything that we could to make our case. So we're just hoping that that will be viewed favorably by the board and we appreciate your attention.
Okay. Um. So I, I have a, I have a question. If this is not about business, um, for the money per se, is there any reason why you can't just rent your property, being that you're not living here just on a long-term basis?
Yeah, we, we, we spend roughly four to five months in Kingston at the current time. And, and the beauty of a short term rental ability is that if something comes up and our daughter needs us, we have a place to stay, we can be there at a moment's notice. If we go into, it, it, you know, we, the house is fully furnished. It, you know, all of our personal stuff is there, we, you know, it was never purchased with the idea of being a, a rental property per se, a long-term rental property, it just doesn't fit with what, what we intend to use it for.
We're there.
Um, you are aware that there are ways to rent your property for shorter periods of time, but not less than 30 days. Where you can rent a month at a time, two months at a time, two months at a time. As a matter of fact, we have two hospitals here and we have a lot of traveling medical professionals, particularly nurses, x-ray technicians and stuff that need, they're, they're technically short, short term, but they're not defined as short term in the law. So there, there's that option as well.
Yes, yes, we are aware of that. Once again, it, that?
We're not opposed.
Yeah, yeah, we're not opposed to that. It does create larger bills for us for the air conditioning, for the heating. Uh, you know, as, as opposed to a short term, plus wear and tear on our personal furniture and, and everything that's in that house. The beauty of a short term rental is that the guests are there a short, a short period of time.
Okay.
We, we do understand that, that we can rent it for, for over 30 days at a time. Thank you for pointing that out, so we appreciate that.
So I'm gonna open this up to you guys to? Is everybody here? We'll, we'll get to that. I just, um, is there, is there anybody here that wants to speak on this application? Okay. So, um, thoughts?
But I feel like I can admit that there's other alternatives to the variance and we should explore those options before seeking a variance.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is a use variance and this application doesn't in any way address all of the various potential ways in which they can get a reasonable rate of return from the property, not the least of which are the ones that I've already brought up. So, um, in order to, in order to really even consider a use variance, we would have to see those financials. Donna, Mary, any thoughts?
Thank you. I used to have a house and a second home. I never considered renting the second home. It was out of state, it was in South Carolina. I, you know, took the responsibility financially of whatever was going to be used either in New York or in South Carolina, that was part of the deal, you know, it wasn't meant to be rented. So, you know, financially, we didn't have an issue with that. But I see here, if you're purchasing a home and you're going to be in it for five months out of the year and the rest of the time you're in Texas and then something happens all of a sudden, if you have a renter in there, you can't kick them out.
No.
So, um, there, that's an issue, that would be an issue for me. And that's why when I was the homeowner with the second home, I would never let anybody in there in case I needed to run back and forth. So for me, I would say, you know, this is, you know, it's, to me, it's not meaningful.
It's just a point of clarification.
What's not possible? To have a use variance, have someone renting it part-time and then they're saying that they're going to be, you know, if something happens, that they need to run up here to be with your daughter and you've got tenants in the house.
Well, I think the point they're, I think the point they're making is that that's the reason they want the variance is that they want it to be short term. So, you know, most Airbnb rentals are weekends and a week. Sometimes they're a little longer than that, but they are very short term. So that, that allows them to work around that schedule. They, if they have to, they can block dates out. That's the issue here. They want a use variance, you know, in the infinite wisdom of the city.
Yeah.
You know, we, we took short term rental and put it as, defined it as a hotel. You know, that, that decision aside, which is, which has created this problem, you know, is the, is the law that we're dealing with. You know, I, aside from, aside from the fact that this is a heavy lift and we don't even have the documentation to, for them to be able to demonstrate that. And I think it's going to be difficult to do that because there are options to rent for longer periods of time, but not necessarily six to 12 months, a standard long-term rental situation. So, um.
Well, that's why I brought that up because if something happened as an emergency and you're renting it for two to three months at a time and in the middle, you know, they can't, they can't define.
That's what hotels are for. That's what hotels are for.
Yeah, I mean, as a, as a, as a policy point of view, I think that this is a perfect example of why we should allow short term rentals. But I think under the current code and the current laws of the city of Kingston, this is not something that we can do.
And given the situation being some with housing as it is right now, we need more long-term rentals, six months, you know, or more. So I, I agree.
Well, yeah, that's not, I mean, that's a, that's a point of view, but that's not something we can impose on the applicant. I mean, we just have to, we, you know, so my question is, you know, do we, do we ask the applicant to withdraw this application if they want to go through the tedious attempt to try and demonstrate hardship and that there's no other reasonable rate of return with a, with a detailed financial analysis? I don't see how that happens. I mean, it's, it's up to them. But if they want us to rule on this tonight, we'll rule on it. I'm gonna put that to you, Mr. Rabado. Have you been following the conversation?
Uh, yeah, we have, we have, um. Yeah, it, currently, it, it's not a financial hardship for us. Okay, I mean, I just want to be honest about that, but what it is?
That's good.
What it is, is? Yeah, it is extra risk for us in a house that is sitting vacant that while it would be short term rented, then we can, we, we have people in place who we are contracting with to maintain the property and, and to, and to look out after it frankly. So that's one point, the other being that, that the way that it, that the law was implemented, I gotta just tell you from my heart, was very unfair to us. I mean, we were, we're trying to do the right thing by the city, by the code. But we were, it wa, it was never, it was never explained to us what the voluntary listing was all about. And those people who did that are now exempt and we simply think that's not fair.
Yes, Mr. Rabado, I'm not going to argue that point. And I will also say that you are not the only one who finds himself in this situation. All that being said, we have to determine based on this application whether or not we can give you a use variance. So if you'd like us to go ahead and, and take a vote and rule on whether or not we're going to issue that variance, we can do that now.
But one, one second, let me discuss it with my wife just real shortly. I beg your indulgence.
It's either too cold or too hot. Chambers, my, I don't know. Out the spontaneous street. No, no, the, um, the winter windows, I saw them like lined up in the hallway the other day.
Yeah. I just advise. There's. I mean, you could prolong this thing, but it's just gonna, I'm afraid it's just gonna end up in the same place until after the new code.
Well, this is, this is what's up in the area now with new codes. So, you know, I hope that they comment on, on it because it's a, I mean, personally, I think this is a perfect example where we shouldn't allow short term rentals because you're not being long-term housing from market. So it's like, if they're gonna, they're gonna be there for a while, they should, why not make it productive in some other way when they're not there? Because it doesn't really work for a long-term housing.
Yeah, that's exactly the point. Thank you for bringing that up. I, I guess, um, I, I guess we, I've discussed it with Kay, sorry for the holdup. I, I guess we, we would like to withdraw our variance up until the time that the discussion has had about possibly altering the existing code. It, it seems like the best move for us at this juncture. But we do appreciate you here on our side.
Do you know about the Kingston Forward project right now?
Vaguely.
But yeah, in, in broad strokes, not any detail.
So contact Artex, comment on it, and that's all, that's all I can say for right now. This is a perfect example that should be heard. And, you know, this can be reevaluated when new code is in place.
Okay, thank you very much for your time, people. We appreciate it.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Rabado. And sorry. So that application's been withdrawn. Um. Just as an aside, are you telling me that they're planning on not allowing people to?
Come back and forth. We'll, we'll, we'll have coffee and chat about that.
Meanwhile, I want my attorney to come in because I'm getting a little sick of this situation. But that's neither here nor there. It's definitely for an adult beverage just conversation. Okay, 131 Tammany Street. There you are. And you are?
My name's Virginia Walker.
Hi, Virginia. Come on, uh, come on up in here, just sign in. And, um, just put your address. And it's 131 Tammany, right? Because you would look upstairs. I drove by, by the way.
I actually don't live there.
Oh, you don't?
No, I actually live in Long Island.
Okay. And so the upstairs is rented?
Correct.
Okay.
So I am not the?
Not short term. We try to make, we try to create liberty wherever we get this, very dry stuff.
Uh, can I say here?
Yes.
All right. Uh, my name's Virginia Walker. The, I represent a James Riker. He is the owner of 131 Tammany Street in our application. We have signed authorization to represent here, represent today. With me is Jordan Lau. She's the office manager of Riker Industries, which is a corporation in Kingston that owns a few businesses, including Beautiful Bodies Autobody, which is basically right across the street.
Hello.
Oh, sorry. Um, so 131 Tammany Street is a building that was purchased three years ago, 2017, I believe.
Anybody?
Twenty nineteen, thank you. Um, and it is basically a giant garage. It's the former home of Dominic's, Dominic's fencing. There is, does have an apartment on the upper level. Entrance of the, it's basically a giant garage, very large ceiling. So the grill, the building was originally purchased for use for the body shop, for storage and whatnot. And over time, things changed within the business and it hasn't been renewed as such. James Riker, the owner, he is my brother. And so I have a small business and I currently live in Long Island and I am relocating to Ulster County. I'm closing on a house for you in next month. And so we're looking to this variance to change to commercial zoning because we would like to install a commercial kitchen space and warehouse as a production facility. So to clarify, this would not be open to the public. It would be specifically for manufacturing and production. And because this building was used as Dominic's fencing, it has large, a large parking lot in the front and in the back. And so bringing trucks in and out is, there's ample space for it. I do not expect to have eighteen millers coming in and out. The trucks that I'm currently working with now, you know, they're, they're a bit nice sized box trucks, but don't, nothing, nothing giant like that. As far as the financials go, the tenant that's on the second floor is paying rent. And it does cover like just about much of the mortgage. We do show a shortage on the taxes. So there is financial hardship there, whereas like this is a nice sized building that's just getting used as storage and putting a business in this area would bring in, bring in rent to cover that, that shortage. The neighborhood itself, Mickey's Igloo is right there. It is a business district. So this building is, from what Mr. Kitchen told me, that this building is grandfathered in kind of as a residence area. We'd like to pass the variance to change it to commercial.
Okay, so, um. Anybody have any questions? Is there anybody here that is interested in speaking to this application? Okay, so I have, I have a number of questions. I, I understand like out on East Chester Street and down where Beautiful Bodies is, you have Mickey's Igloo and stuff like that, but that, that street is, is all residential?
Yes, yes, that street is residential. And there's a very large parking lot specifically in front of 131 Tammany Street. So if there was a truck that was coming in off East Chester, they pull right up to the road and they would land right in that very large parking lot. And because the building is currently being used as storage, I have had trucks come in there with talents of raw materials that have been stored there. So.
Can I, can I speak? Um.
Yeah.
So directly across?
Do you need to sign and name and address?
Yes, you want me to write it or state it? Okay, thanks. Um, Jordan Lau. So yeah, I kind of manage the property over there. And in the area right across the street is Mickey's Igloo with a business and a tenant attached. Down the road is a, some kind of new bike shop with tenants attached. Urban Fork with a business and tenants attached. So it's not uncommon for that area to have those types of, with the tenant above, plus the tenant that's in there is used to a, um, a business already that was in the bottom.
Was your concern more about the specific street of Tammany having more residential houses on it?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, um, I, I get that once you get to the end of Tammany, it all, it's all commercial. But Tammany is a residential street. And, and part of what we need to do is consider the impact, you know, and is it consistent with, you know, the other houses on the street? And so, you know, um, it's, it's, it's on the edge.
Yes, and, and we don't have any intention to change the facade of the building because there's no need to make it into a storefront of any type. It's strictly a production facility.
No, I real, I realize that. I, I'm. So what, uh, what I don't see in the application, uh, you know, changing zoning from residential to commercial, and I understand there's, there's this requirement for the production facility that it has to be commercial. I have a number of questions about that, like it, does it, does the whole building have to be commercial? Or can you get a, uh, just a variance for commercial use in, in, in the space?
I'm not sure of this.
Okay, so, you know, part of the dilemma we have here is, is that a use variance, change of use is a very heavy lift. And you have to demonstrate hardship and you have to go through all of the iterations of what the property is currently zoned to, to be, to determine whether or not you can get a reasonable rate of return from any of them. And the first thing that comes to my mind where it is, we're in a housing crisis. You know, another apartment down there would be really welcomed and probably solve your problem. And I'm not telling you what to do with your building, but I'm just saying that if that's an option, is, what's the zone?
Is, I don't remember. Is it RR?
Yeah.
Is it, is it able to be a two-family?
It is, you would have, I mean, here.
Because if it is, I, I didn't actually get a chance.
Here's a picture of the building. It is, it is two garage, just two garage doors on either side.
Oh, no, I've been there.
So, yeah, yeah. So to turn this into a solitary or to another apartment would be major.
It's RR.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well.
I was there when they built it.
Yeah, I, I know, I wasn't, but I know the area, so.
I, I know the path of least resistance is to use it for a commercial purpose.
Right, right.
The, the issue here is the use that you want, the commercial use that you want is requiring a rezoning. There are probably commercial uses that are available to be, you, you know, uses that you can do there that don't require a change in zoning. And that's part of the dilemma here is, is that can you get a reasonable rate, rate of return from one of those uses? And you have to do the, you have to do the, the math on each one of them to demonstrate hardship.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you're going to be able to get over that far. There's probably other things that you can do that is legal under the zoning that doesn't require a use change. There's probably other things that you can do that is legal under the zoning that doesn't require a use change.
Brian, just one thing. A part of her application states that now the zoning, commercial zoning, they wouldn't be able to be in compliance with Board of Health.
No, I know that, but that's, but that, that's the, that's the restriction that the Board of Health is putting on it. Okay, what, that's, that, which is, you know, I get it, but what we have to decide is whether or not we're going to change the use.
Because it only takes the common council to change the use.
It would be a rezoning of the building and that's not our purview. They're, she's looking for, she's looking for a use variance.
Yeah, I mean, under the accessory uses, the commercial, if you didn't have to install a full commercial, if you could use household appliances, it would be permitted. If you needed commercial appliances, then it's not permitted. Although sometime early next year.
Revisit.
Yeah, yeah, that's--
So you're, so you're saying there's going to be change to the code with the use variance?
This, this would be a permitted use under the new proposed code, but--
Everything is permitted.
That is not law, that, therefore it's all up in the air. But if you wanted to, we might be in a whole different scenario.
Everything's permitted.
So you're, so you're suggesting that if we were going to explore this route, that you would have to see, show any direction for other options, other commercial options, other than--
Yeah, so this is the code book and here is, here is the RR. And this tells you all the things that you could do. And that's, when it comes to use variances, you have to go through these and demonstrate that one, you know, that none of these can get you a rate of return, a reasonable rate of return on the property in order to demonstrate the hardship you would need to get the use variance. Unfortunately, use variances are very high bar.
Right, well, I feel like--
But under the new code, the bar is very--
No, the bar is exactly the same. It's just what's permitted by rights.
Would you recommend that I table my application until next year or do I need to withdraw?
Personally, I would, but--
Because that was a big check to write and to get.
I, I, I would, I would withdraw your application and, and honestly, you probably will not need a variance at all under the new code. It's hard to say when it'll be adopted. I mean, it'll be in front of the common council in January, February of next year.
By the way, I really like the, right now, right now, there is a huge need for certified commercial kitchens for this kind of production. And, and there are several people looking at building, you know, kitchens actually so that multiple people can use it for--
And we, we would love to see that. I mean, the production that I need, only needs a partial time and certainly, you know, I'm really looking forward to expand in case it's maybe very much part of the community here. And I know even in Long Island where I am, there's a lot of shared incubators. So I'm really excited to probably share into this space and to a commercial kitchen space. So, okay. Well, I guess we'll withdraw and revisit in a few months. And can I check in with Mr. Kitchen?
Yes. Can you be called to like the middle of January?
Okay.
Have to suit?
All right, thank you, yeah.
Go to, and they engage these websites, subscribe to these forward or imagine things that are subscribed there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm gonna make our job a lot easier in this room. I would like to meet only every couple of months on these-- Your basis.
All right. Take a, take a breather here for a second. We get recalibrated. Well, they're next. Oh, you want to do grant first? Okay. Is there anybody here for Grant Street? Okay, great. Is there anybody here just other than yourselves? You're the applicants, right? Oh, you're not--
Green.
Greens? So you're the applicant. Okay, and, okay. So, all right. So you're proposing to move Golden Hill? Yes, this is the lot on Grant Street.
Yeah.
Yes, let's, let's go ahead and address that. Sorry, Golden Hill. All right.
You live on Tammany Street, huh?
Yes.
We're just chasing everybody who lives there.
You don't live in a moving garage?
I am, no. I live, actually live behind Mickey's Igloo.
Oh, you're attached to Mickey's Igloo?
No, no, not on the house, next to the--
No, I was just kidding. I know, when, when we call you, you can do that.
No, you can sit up here, yes, tell us where--
So. What, what do you want to do?
The lot right now is currently owned by John W. G. So I'm purchasing the lot and I want to put a three car garage with little space upstairs. It'll be the twenty-four by fifty-six. And it's not being used as commercial. I have many trucks, motorcycles, cars. So that'll go there and I have planned on renting it. My dad lives out of state now currently and my mom lives out of state. And I have a twenty-one year old son, telling his mother, so if he comes to me, he can live up there. But that's pretty much it as far as the space is done.
So under the current code, as I understand it, it needs to be fifty feet wide. It's thirty--
Thirty.
Thirty what?
Two.
Two, right? So we're talking eighteen, eighteen foot shy, right? Something like that. Pardon?
One hundred and two feet.
It's dead, totally deep enough, but it's just the width. I, I've been, it's, it, it's flat. It's really, you know, it's, it's different than the lot that the other folks came, which was kind of like, you know, looked like something on Swiss Mist, you know.
Like, uh, Camaro's.
I mean, that was like a, you know, for Billy--
Big Rock Hill.
That, that, that was, that was a tough one, but-- Pardon?
So I, I don't remember, but I heard years ago there was possibly trailers or something on that lot maybe ten, maybe a year ago. I don't know.
Right. And the width here of, of the building again is going to be what that you're proposing?
Twenty-two, twenty-three and--
This right here.
So. Twenty-three and a half by fifty, twenty-three and a half by fifty-six.
So we have a use variance, I mean, an area variance for, the width of the lot, but do we also have-- Set creates, yeah, it's going to create a side yard set. So you're going to need variances for that as well or?
Yes.
Yes. You don't have a complete site plan?
No.
This is the floor plan for upstairs?
Yes, but this is, this is actually, it's a two bedroom, but same size, but different floor plan. Like a open floor plan for the kitchen, bath, and the bedrooms on the, beyond the door side.
Okay, this, this is an old iteration. This is an older one. It's changed.
Yes. Yes. Oh, excuse me, yes, this is the current.
This is the current?
Yeah, this is, it's, it's changed and this is clearly seven. So it's the same type of floor plan, same exact thing, but the, just the, the--
Okay.
So that's just upstairs?
Yes.
That wasn't even long in time. Didn't say anything about three car garage and easy building. And is the address going to be Grant Street or is it going to be Lincoln? It's very good, pull the cars into, Lincoln, right?
Yes.
What else? Um, what else do you need in terms of you? What would you want to see on the site?
I, I would like to see a site plan with elevations and, and understanding what this garage and overall this mass of the building is going to look like on a small lot, especially being in terms of a three car garage is a part of this. I am a little concerned about community character if we're talking about what is going to be primarily a garage with living space instead of living space with garage. So, you know, not unlike the other building that we were just--
Yes, matter of fact, it looks a lot like-- Except for it's only got a two car garage. It's not, it's not going to win any architectural digest.
I, I would consider that building the outlier in the community amount of standard, so. I'm not that concerned about the subs and, subs and, and the lot, but I'm concerned that it's on a, a community character.
So, oh, okay, so it's sort of a cake style building to, this is just an-- What exactly is this? Just a picture of--
That's one that's already been built once before.
Oh, okay.
So that's like a special of this.
Yes. Sorry. It actually doesn't look nearly as-- But our job, our, our job is really not--
Yeah.
To get into aesthetics, although I have to say, it's not a half bad building, but anyhow. We're, our, our goal is, is it, is it too big of a variance? Is it going to change the character of the neighborhood?
Well, I think we also need to know what the other set, other setback requirements are going to be depending on how it's going to place on the lot. We're going to need--
Well, that they have. It's four on the side, three--
There's something else, okay. Is that not in application? I think--
Yeah, it was. It was in mine. Maybe they don't like you. What's the, oh, okay. What's this? R1, okay. So why?
You're drawing exactly away on Grant Street though, so you're going to have three, this, this, that building is going to face this direction? That doesn't seem like it.
So I, well, this is what is done on Grant Street, but I want to change it to make it so the garage was on this side as far as the same, same places of the building right here, but this is showing an entrance from Grant Street, which I wanted.
So the garage is, the base of it--
Would be--
I'm just going to show--
On Lincoln.
Yes.
It's going to face Lincoln.
Exactly.
Yes, yes.
These are facing--
This is facing, this would be Lincoln Street and Grant Street would be on that.
I know.
On this corner.
So this is the back?
Grant Street would be on this side, Lincoln Street would be on--
Right, so the garage in the front of--
There's a, what's, give me, what's the rear yard? I mean, I mean, it's not entirely the, your rear yard if they, I, I, I don't know what the address of this house is going to be, whether it's going to be on Grant Street or what, but the way it's, the way it's set up, there's, so I'm just looking at the, the R1. It's a, it's a thirty, thirty foot rear yard setback, so.
It can't be dating anyway. If, if that's, well, if that were to go out the rear yard, then it's not, that's not that bad, but if it's, if it's Lincoln Street-- I mean, but such is the, the challenge.
You really just need the rear yards up there, because you'd meet the side setbacks if it's facing Lincoln.
Yeah, yeah.
You need the front setbacks.
What's, what's the, what's the front setback?
We'll meet the front setback.
Yeah, but isn't it fifteen on the front?
No, the front is fifteen.
Fifteen, here's thirty. So you're saying the setbacks would be here, that's just Lincoln?
That is Lincoln, that, that it doesn't get here or here, but the sides are front. You know, the challenge, no matter what, it's a substantial lot.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, ultim- ultimately, the size of the building that you want to build on this lot is, you know, is, is maxing out the setback requirements. That's, and, and the orientation too. And it's a big, it's a pretty decent sized building considering the size of a lot. But. Will it?
Is there a previous structure on the lot?
So on that, on the block foundation and it burned up and they buried the trailer in the foundation and come to it all.
There may be a part of code that would allow him to build a house there because of that.
But it would have to be the same footprint, no?
Four oh five, say fifty-seven. The house burns down or tore down, but it, its use is reformedly. House can be rebuilt.
But on the same--
To save. No, it doesn't say for prices. And to increase, it says in the code.
Well, I mean, there's a, there's a fire--
Time frame?
Yes, that's what I was saying. There's no time frame. You can rebuild it at any time.
Get there, everything. We just had, for example-- This is called nonreforming buildings and use. Four oh five, yes, forty-eight. In any district other than a residence district, any use which is--
Read that.
What are you looking at for a lot?
This is different than what I have.
Oh, okay, that's fine. This is like so small and standard. This is like so small and standard, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out what I wanted, yeah.
That's different than what I have.
Time, yeah, yeah.
I have already here, the non-conforming.
See my line, my book, different.
I, my understanding is, is that there's a period of time in which you have to.
Not according to my book I got, I understand, because we just allowed a house to be built over on Pond Grove Avenue, and me and Sue Kato went, talked about this several times, that if a house, if there's a fire or something happens, on that lot, which is an underside lot, the house could be rebuilt, if, the house can be rebuilt, and not just the footprint, but to increase that footprint.
But requiring a variance if it has setback issue?
No.
Well, wait a minute, so, so what happened with this? What happened, are you trying to tell me there was a, there was a fire there, or what?
Yeah, that's what you were saying.
No, I was, when I, there was a man, there was a man, there was a, a veteran that was disabled, and years ago, about fifty years ago. He bought his permission, and he put a trailer there. The guy passed away and was vacant for years, and the kid got in it and set it on fire.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that.
I don't remember, I don't think it was.
It's four oh five, forty-seven under this.
And B two.
And it's B two.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. If a building which houses a non-conforming use is accidentally destroyed accidentally due to fire, explosion, or other cause to an extent not seen to prove its value determinates to be attacked, that's what's been stored within one year. It's potentially the same size, form, and location, the same non-conforming, can be stated. Now, we're going to see, any building other than a sign, the use of which is inconformity, residential, with the regulations set forth in this chapter, but which building does not conform to one or more of the requirements hereof, other than the use requirements, or the requirements which apply to buildings located in landmark districts may be altered, enlarged, or rebuilt so as to increase the degree of non-conformity.
There is the mud. Who wrote that, somebody should be shot.
So I've been several conversations with Sue about this, and she's in full agreement with me. So we've had people that.
But that doesn't apply here.
No, this will apply, if, if, if there was a building there at one time, and I got the, if I got a record, it shows there was a building there.
Okay, does it have to be a building, or does it can be a mobile home?
It was a mobile home. Has to be a building, anything other than a sign.
Okay, so that would apply, that would fit, and, and, yeah, it's not, wasn't.
Okay, so, in the interest of moving on.
Yeah.
Um, couple of things. I think that it might not be a bad idea to table this. Um, let Eric do some homework and find out if there is any documentation of a structure on the property, what that is. Um, in the meantime, it might not be a bad idea if you could get us just some elevations. But who's doing your, um, who's, who's doing draw, your building drawings and stuff like that? Do you have an architect?
The bottom will be sticked, build the top is, uh, is this moderate, that's what I'm saying.
Well, we'll be at one, we'll be in there.
Okay, well, if you could get us, if you could just get us some elevation, showing how it's, how it's gonna sit on the property, look from Lincoln and so on and so forth, that would be really helpful. In the meantime, Eric can check the record to see if, um, this whole thing might be circumvented by this. I, I'm, I'm gonna have to read that for myself, because I, I just, you know, I glazed over. Um, I could first, here before, um, yeah, but.
Um, are you stuck with that design?
Um, no, I, if things have changed, I'd wanted a three-car, but we need a two-car.
What's wrong with the design? I don't know, it's like.
You start redesigning.
We're gonna, you know, it's, I mean, I guess it does exist in that neighborhood, but it's gonna be a lot curb cut.
It could do a shoot again.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care about the size of the garage, it's the amount of curb cut, you know.
Fifty-six?
Yeah, it should get a little bit less.
The side curb cut, maybe carefully.
So you're saying.
Don't feel afraid.
Along the way.
It's gotta be fifty-six, it's gotta long.
Well, you can't, you, you can't, I don't believe you can do that building the other way, it has to get so long.
It has to go only Lincoln, here.
Yeah, you can't do it on Grant, you can't do it on thirty-two.
Grant Street would be twenty-four by twenty-four.
Yeah, exactly.
The other alternative is to do two-car gar- garage tandem. And that would allow you to orient the house differently.
But a shed and motorcycles.
You know what I'm saying? Yeah, so we've got a two-car garage, but it here, but it's tandem, yeah, yeah.
I mean, or even, you know, if motorcycles are your thing, then, you know, two garage doors, and this can be some other type of area behind which you still have space in there, you know, it's just kind of minimizing the amount of, uh, of just like pavement, if somebody's gonna walk down the street, they had to cross all this, this part of it. It's a bit of a problem because of non-conforming stuff that's already out there, um, but, uh, you know, somebody's walking down the street, you know, and so I'm okay, I'm, right, okay.
But for now, we're gonna, um, we're gonna have a motion, can I have a motion table this?
I'll second.
Oh, pardon? Yes, before we table it, let's, let's thank you for reminding, well, so, is there anybody that would like to speak to some concerns or, um, or in support, whatever, come on up and sign your, find your name and. That shit is heavy as hell. Thought that was gonna be.
Yeah.
Concern is that the way this is gonna be set up, is we're gonna be four feet from the road, and four feet from the next, the next door property, right?
Yes, that is true, the setbacks, it's very, very close.
There's not gonna be any driveway.
Um.
It will, it's still a small lot.
Yes, it's narrow, it's eighteen feet narrow than it, yeah, um.
Thirty-two.
I mean, there is a, there is a, I mean, this is showing a driveway here, but that's not, that's not accurate anymore.
Okay.
The, you wanna make the driveway of Lincoln, so, yeah, so, uh, there would not be, uh, there really wouldn't be a driveway, it would be just going right into the garage, yeah.
There's just no room.
Uh, not in that configuration, no. No, uh, if the building were redesigned in such a way where it was just a two-car garage, it could be sighted, um, it could be sighted differently, where you could drive into, to it from Grant Street.
I think that really, yes.
Just so everyone's aware, actually, if you look at the sidewalks over here, this, no, on where the markets are, there is a setback from where the side of the street is, so from the edge of the garage to the street is actually about almost twelve, thirteen foot, so much larger than it looks, because that's setback into the lawn from the edge of the, edge of the road, city maintains that section. I live on Ohio Street, house is situated the same way.
So you're telling me there is gonna be like ten or twelve feet of.
Yeah, it's, okay, it's not just four.
And your name?
John, and which I built the apartments, please.
Done your name, John, you opened your mouth, you get the sound of it.
I don't, I don't see how that, I saw the question.
Yeah, by the.
Thirty-two feet, the house is twenty-four feet wide, that's eight feet, period.
Right, and it's, that is, that, I mean, in that area of Kingston, it's definitely different, there's more space between houses, but it's not uncommon in the city of Kingston. This is where, where buildings are, are within ten, eight to ten feet of one another. I understand that neighborhood is more suburban in nature.
Yeah.
Our housing is like eight feet, eight feet from the garage, eight feet, ups out, give or take, from the house next door.
Thank you for coming here, Tom. Do you want?
Yes, uh. Michael Robliari, eighty-eight Grand Street.
Are you right next door?
Right next door, yes.
So you're the one who's gonna be contending with the proximity of the building to the property boundary.
The, the, uh, the parcel I live on was two fifty-foot building lots, nineteen thirty-six, it was combined into a hundred by a hundred and fifty-two, I think. Um, I'm the second owner there, I bought it from the estate of the original people, um, who didn't buy that script because they didn't wanna pay for a sidewalk on both sides, but anyway, um, so that script has been there, uh, for a while, and I've heard some of the history of it. Um, I came here because I didn't know what they were proposing, I didn't get to see the picture or, or anything yet. Do you mind if I look at that?
For sure, please, just to see what kind of.
Is, oh, yeah. It's over there, yeah.
Thanks.
Yep.
So obviously, you know, the variance is, so, uh.
Yeah, so this is gonna sit like that on the property, right?
Um, I think the entrances would be better on Lincoln Street, uh, as like this picture.
In that, in that, in that orientation, yeah, there's no other way you could do it.
No, I was just, uh, pointing out that, um, well, this area is R1 going north up here, right? I'm not sure what that entails, but, um, as far as the, uh.
Well, it's a fifteen-foot front yard setback.
But would this type of structure be, be allowed under that, that zone?
Well, yes, but, but this lot is substandard, you know, it's not, it, it would, the current code requires fifty feet, five hundred.
Okay.
In order to.
Well, I, I'm, they were talking about a rental on Tom or whatever, I don't know how that.
Yeah, I think you, finds out what I've been here.
Yeah, I just, I said, I'd say, I've said that I could rent it, but I do have a mother and father that live by the state.
Oh, okay.
I would, no problem.
You're not finding.
I'm not.
Okay, not that it matters, but I.
Yeah, I mean, single, single.
I will say this, um, going north on Grand Street, and even south on Grand Street, um, primarily, a lot of low-sized buildings, with a couple of capes thrown in here or there, uh, pretty much everything going down Grand Street to the north has about the same setback all the way up, so I was curious if this would extend out past the, the setbacks of all the other houses, or would it be closer to the corner? Does it seem like it's situated as the setback should be on this side?
So in other words, you're, you're looking for it to be in more conformance with where all the houses are setback.
Well, my concern is.
How long Grand Street?
Since they got rid of the light here on East Chester Street, there's, there's no stop sign for traffic going back and forth on Lincoln Street. When we come from Hutton Park or Grand Street.
Is there no stop sign?
No.
Wow.
When we come from Hutton Park or Grand Street, from Hutton Park, it's almost lined, and a lot of times you stop and someone's coming up the hill and shooting across. Um, and I know in the wintertime, being an empty lot, the city puts a lot of snow on this corner, and it's hard to pull out with the visibility.
Right, right.
So that, I was just, the setback was my concern, one of my concerns.
For a site.
For a site, for coming out, I mean, if they made it a four-way stop, might be better, but then you'd have to come up the hill on the stone, you know, so you really can't stop, except for a cliff then coming up, so, I mean, that's something that, uh, could be looked at, um, and then I wasn't sure where they were placing the building, if it was gonna be more in this corner, or more.
They're proposing that it kinda almost be in the middle, close to.
That is, you said that they need to run feet to the backyard, this way.
Well, yeah, I mean, none of those setbacks need to require.
Except if the building was right here, the setback is twenty.
Can I ask you what's on the back?
Yeah.
Like, oh, what would be on the back?
Three windows, three windows, three windows.
So it's not gonna be a backyard, or?
No, no, no.
Put a sweet sand, or?
No. But the setup, from this, this corner, this, you know, you said, if looking at the Lincoln side, we're sure of both sides, but from here, it'd be at least twenty feet or more from here, you see, this is twenty feet. I know you're talking about that intersection right here, but there's no stop sign, there's no like here or there.
Right, they got rid of that light that's been in a few maxes.
Man, it's been, yeah. Yeah, um, could we ask the applicant to maybe produce some more photos and graciously share them with the neighbor, and we can pay all this and discuss it? Yeah, I just, I just wanted people to have a chance to talk.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I got it, Eric. Okay. But thank you, those were, I, I didn't know about this intersection, it's very helpful information, I appreciate it.
Well, it's hairy when you come from Hutton Park, uh, Tom lives on this corner here, he probably knows that as well, but, uh, right now, if it's not wintertime, his view is pretty good, but, you know, winter, it's hard pulling out, and someone's like shooting across there, and that was just, you know.
Sounds like they need.
Right.
Another stop sign.
Being, what?
Not around.
Nobody stopped it.
Can I have a motion to table?
I'm on the table.
Well, I'm at East Chester.
Okay, all those in.
There, like, a couple months ago.
They should have, I don't know, why they got rid of that light?
You have to talk to your alterment.
Yeah.
Your alterment gets this.
So, at this point, I'm just gonna wait to see what the, what's happening. I was gonna see if I can catch you for what you had, but it's, it's.
Okay, hold on a second.
Mexico.
Um, they're next to the last, um. Who needs the money?
Mary. Nancy.
Well, there. All right, um. What? Tell all people.
Not serious, it's harder when it went on its work.
Thank you, but sorry it took so long. Thank you, everyone.
So, you don't.
You guys don't wanna stay and listen to the rest of it?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys. Yeah. All right, Golden Hill. And we're.
Better board.
And we're blessed to be in the company of Dennis Doyle, who has also calculated a extraordinary.
Thank you, sir. Yep. Want me to just do a brief overview? Really, yes, and your name, Mitch, sure, and it's Roger Keating from Woodhella Associates, um, here's my under-hack of, uh, Penrose, and, um, he's that sort.
Um, here's my under half of Penrose and, um, he's that sort of, um, civil side engineer for the project. Um, Golden Hill is a, um, portable housing, mixed use type of project. Uh, we have, uh, a request in for the area variance for what's called the senior building. So the senior building is in suburb, left hand corner of the site, but I'll spend this around assisting the larger, the larger. Project, um, you have Golden Hill Drive here, this is the former jail site. We have, um, the health department next door. The really question that was seen in the decon is the one we, the upper left hand corner, which I just, this enlargement here. Uh, the project through site plan, um, reviews and approval of the planning board. Uh, we have also gone before the council for getting the zone change, so the amount of the O two district. Um, and there's a series of buildings throughout the site, um, and the one that we're primarily focused on is the area variance. So the length on the side of a building, uh, the curlicue is a hundred and sixty feet. Um, this leg of the building is a hundred and ninety three feet. The rest of the building are all in conformance, um, with the plan. Uh, no, no relief for site setbacks or anything on those parts, uh, the rest of the plan is consistent, so, uh, that's it, Bill.
All right, I, I, I have, uh, I don't understand how this project got approved. Zoning change, all that, and now you're coming to us for variance? Supposed to be a variance first and then approved.
It's a condition within the site.
Yeah. Okay.
So, uh, I, I can read if you want, uh.
I'm not saying it's your fault, I'm just remembering how that happened.
Yeah, now, especially in projects this large, um, rather than going through, getting the variance first, then like oftentimes I'll go through the site plan, this is what's required. And it'll be as part of the approval for the site and it'll be a condition, so it's a condition that they have to meet, um.
Oh, the Kingstonian, a big project, they came for us for variance before they got approval. And then we never saw them again. We'd like to know how that worked out.
Yeah.
So I don't even know how they resolved that variance because we never saw them again. But, um, so I, I was just curious about that. If, um, and, um, so is there a reason why this building is so massive? And not broken into two?
So as part of this, this process with our site planning and everything, and you know, the, the jail site is up on the top of the hill there. Um, and the development, um, in the early stages had a series of additional buildings. Some of those areas are further, were further down, um, as we went through the design process. Um, we did a series of warnings out there to understand where a lot of things like that are. Um, and with some of the site constraints with topography and such, we reduced the number of buildings. Tried to work the plan to keep it as much in the existing developed footprint as possible because it's, it's built out there with the jail and some of the other buildings. And when we went through that process, um, we went with, uh, two bar area buildings with a, with a smaller townhouse, top building and that. So it really was actually to take some of the buildings up further downhill, get them, allow those trees to remain in the projects. We, we disturb all those areas and consolidate and condense the development.
So in essence, what, what the building design was, was about was to try to make sure that we could fit into the landscape as much as possible. Right, and not, and, and reduce the area of this, I mean, I get, I get it, it's just, that's a monster building.
Actually, if you think about it, it's not that large compared to some of the other structures that are up there, the county's office, the county mental health buildings up there and as well as the health related facility and the nursing facility, in terms of length, it exceeds, exceeds those requirements as well.
But the height, what is that, four story?
This is, um.
The senior building is four stories.
This is a four and this is a three.
Right, so you got twenty.
Here's a four on the back.
You got twenty units on each floor.
Yep.
So if you didn't have thirty three feet, it would reduce the number of units, correct?
That would be correct.
That would be correct. And if we don't have thirty three feet, we probably don't have a project. Well. Watch your brain. That's, I can't stand the pressure, um. Uh, the, so there, so there's no way, there's no way for that building to be, uh, not to, to be too building. There's just not, no room.
Um, well, again, you, you know, working within the setbacks, the topography and trying to keep your, the project into those developed, developed areas as much as possible. Um, we're looking to consolidate it so we're not having to disturb more areas.
I guess my, my, my cons, my concern is just the, is the feeling, the institutional feeling of a building that's four stories high and a hundred and ninety three feet on one leg and then it shovels all to another, whatever. It's a, it's a monster building. It produce, uh, renderings of the structure.
So that, that would consider by the planning board, planning board went through, a full apartment backstage and arrived at a.
Negdeck, yeah.
Negdeck included a discussion with respect to community character.
Well, it's sitting in the back, so it's not affecting the community. You know, you think about it.
Yeah, no. Gonna see this. But the people who live there.
And there's some operational advantages to a building as well, since it is a senior building, there are twenty units in here that are for, for, twenty six units for frail, for frail elderly, so there's some operational advantages to have a single building. Expect to have those support services in there and that support services will actually be, uh, be in that building. It's not just, it's not just a, no. And support or service, I think there's various facilities in there as well.
Should we remember how that the original? Is that the longer. This is not a community character.
It's, it's not, yeah.
Okay, this is standalone project, uh, you know, you have to be up there.
Yeah, well, I would say that the, the other thing with the building, when we looked at the site number, the things that we did with these buildings. If you've been on the site, there's some pretty significant views up here. So we've tried to make sure that the site captured those significant views and assets.
Yeah, I mean, it, it would have been nice to see some of the elevations and the, and the finished buildings and stuff like that, but, you know.
They're, they are online and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I haven't paid attention specifically to that building.
No, okay.
The entire site plan is online as well as the, as well as the rendering, so we did conduct four public meetings. Uh, not, not including the meetings that were held with respect to the planning board, the public comments that were received there.
Oh, I would have paid more attention to it if I knew you guys were gonna share.
I will make all the public comment relative to the size of the building. Yeah, I think they're all. The major focus of public comments here were stormwater, traffic, traffic was the biggest thing ever. From the cities, for the cities' perspective, some concerns that we expect are worse as well.
Yeah.
And, uh, and so, but not a.
Not a massing issue.
Not a massing issue, um, and, uh, and we, we did, it is designed, we, I think we had this conversation the other night. It is designed at a scale, so it creates a community, um, and the affordability is, is large and we go from thirty percent of AMI all the way up to eighty percent of AMI, uh, with, with the, the townhouses in the middle left basically designed for workforce housing. And there'll be twenty two units, I believe, of supportive housing, uh, in that, in that, in that is, as well, they're scattered throughout the site. Uh, and then this site, this site actually has, we work with the fire department to make sure that the fire department could get around the buildings and the fire company doesn't have an issue with the expected. We've also worked as a community guard as back on that building as well.
Where would I find the renderings online?
Uh, if you look at the main department's project page, they should be there.
I'm gonna come out.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm a county.
Oh, no.
The city, the city.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah.
In the, in the meantime, um, is there anybody, is there anybody here that would like to speak to this application?
I would.
I kind of thought you might. If you need to come over and sign up.
First of all, if you're due to. The, um.
Well, first.
Entrance, yes, I'm Joseph DeFatt, when I live at sixty six Glen Street.
Thank you.
Uh, we were, we're about the size of the building, they look at it in this way, you see four stories there and you can imagine the size of this building that they're talking about.
Completely different.
Lots of different environment, but the building is big. See how big the building is, but I understand that, but you get the communications from my wife.
I did.
Okay, so. Okay, so I'll remind you about what's been going on with this Penrose and the presentation of Dennis Doyle and this project. I don't know if you're all aware that they've all been brought up on ethical charges for misrepresenting this project from the beginning. The heck, I didn't interrupt nobody. Now. Does he interrupt? I just missed, I lost my train of thought for a moment.
Let's just try it.
I'm gonna respect him, yes, I'll be respectful too, but I don't want to be interrupted. You can.
I'm not gonna interrupt.
Okay, so, uh, they've been all been brought up on ethical charges with the county or misrepresenting this project. It said they had four or five, just excuse me, you.
As soon as I understand what's before the board is the variance, so if you're gonna talk about the variance, that's one thing, but the ethical charges are not.
I just want to bring it up that they all were brought up on ethical charges.
Yeah.
They're not aware of it and I want to make them aware of it, okay.
So let's. Let's speak to the application.
The application should be, uh, table, table dismissed because of, it's misrepresented this project from the beginning. Uh, they had four or five public hearings on it and now they want a variance first and then it's smaller. Now they want to make it bigger. Why it was, this, the information that they presented here is not the same information that they presented at the planning board or the zoning board or the other boards prior to coming here for the rates. It's not the same information, okay? They should go back to wherever they came from and start over. They knew that this project's a wonderful project, but they're making it smell and stink because they're, uh, running around, going to back doors.
Remember that respectful thing.
Okay, going to back doors, trying to get fast track this approval for this project, okay? There's so many financial, uh, issues about this project that have not yet been addressed. It would be addressed in the future, okay?
But bear in mind, all these are, all these may be, um, valid concerns and valid issues, but we have to stick to the.
Okay.
To the confines and discussion of this application and speak to the issue of the variance.
Okay, the variance was represented to the project from the beginning. Now they want to change it to, to, uh, enlarge it.
Yes.
Make it larger. Make it larger.
How small is our, I couldn't find that.
The building mustn't matter anymore.
It's.
It has to have the documents. Okay?
Oh, one.
Can you imagine how big that building is, four stories?
It.
Okay, a hundred and ninety feet long? I mean, how small is the entire thing building?
Okay, how is this thing going up? That's not valid.
Exactly. And the feet, the fit, the footage of the hundred and ninety feet that they want to go, uh, I'm sure you, that's a, a great large building. Yeah, it's a big building and it's on top of the hill. So, um, let's see, on June thirtieth, twenty two, Penrose representative submitted a zoning. Okay, which requires the laws of the world's committee to, uh, conduct the public hearing. The public hearing, so thank you. Like someone just mentioned before, they put the, the thing before, you see much that they come in here, why they come here before you go in over there.
Yes.
Right? Well.
I did ask that.
Yeah, you did that. You said that. Um, they did the same thing with the zoning board. First of all. He shouldn't have been representing this project because of his conflicts of interest, okay? Mister Doyle wears two hats. You don't know which one he's talking about. He also, he sits on the, the housing development board, he sits on, he, he works.
Right, these, these, and, and again, this sounds irrelevant.
I, I'm asking you to, to throw this, send this back to committee or table, it will get, uh, declined it because, uh, of its size. And it's improper presentation to the public, to the residents and to the other boards in this governmental agency, okay? They weren't the same as it's saying right now. So I'm asking you to, whether you gotta do to table it, make it start over, uh, that is not our purpose. No, but you can, you can table this.
Okay. Are, are you good?
I'm good to table it, yes.
No, no, but are, are you, are you done?
Oh, I'm done because you don't want to hear a history of.
No, no, because, like, we got the letter, by the way, the letter was very, well, they gave us that history.
I didn't give you the.
Without the, without the hyperbole.
Well, they didn't.
I'm gonna get. But, but, but yeah, your wife did a very, very good job of laying that out.
She, she lets out things out, so.
So, yeah, okay, I, I think you maybe covered some of that.
Oh, I got it. The ethics board, because you know what the ethics board is, three times, two, three times, I got, literally three generations of ethics boards. You know Professor Benjamin is?
Yeah, we do, but.
You do?
But, but my question, my question is, you know, we done talking about this application.
You gotta thought that why are you allowed, being allowed to move forward with all of their conflicts?
Sir, just, just so that you know, so there, there's only ports looking at one narrow thing, they're looking at an area variance for the length of a building. So there's certain criteria, there are statute that they look at, but all these other things are not for.
And that was not presented, the size of this building was not presented in the beginning.
Okay, well, when you're done discussing that, they can address that. I know it's, you know, the planning board does have that, that it's mentioned, that it's conditioned on the approval of this variance. And that was what was approved by the planning board, okay?
Because, because of the way they shuffle in the deck, the way they're presenting this piece here.
I, I, I've heard that, I've heard that concern, you made it clear and so did your wife. I just want to know if you're done with what you wanted to say specifically.
I wanted to say, I, I let you know, I scratched this so I'm submitted once, and I'm trying to see that you don't know what's.
And I've heard, and I, I, I understand you have concerns about the process.
Well, I have concerns because you like, I tell you, allow us to move forward and we'll address your problems afterwards. You know, this is the same plan book that they used in nineteen seventy when they built the jail and, and the nursing home. And you know, it took eighteen years to address the problems later. Do you think that's reasonable? You, you have asked me, do you think eighteen years later, addressing problems?
We can't predict that, sir, I'm sorry.
Addressing the line.
Okay, then, then you don't have to table the length of the building until this, other issues can be straightened out.
That is what you would like to have, huh?
Thank you.
Okay.
We're good.
All right, and this is not to open up discussion anymore, discussion is closed at this point. Somebody else here wants to talk about it, but I just want to read.
No, no.
Guys.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to read what we are required to consider, okay? Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby property will be created by granting the area variance. That's number one. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, whether the proposed, proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental condition of the neighborhood or district. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which is considered, is a consideration. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which is considered, is a consideration that's relevant, but isn't necessarily a deal killer for the most part.
Well, didn't somebody mention that there'd be an ice residence?
So I was just reading it. I said before I read it, it was to open up discussion. So that's, those are the criteria that we are using to determine whether or not we're going to table this, approve it, disprove it, disapprove it, whatever. Just put that up there. Do we have any?
Ask one question?
Yeah.
For planning board, was there balloon tests done?
Do you have any questions with respect to the visibility of the project? So you just can't see it. So you really, from where it is, it's very difficult to see it. I mean, the jail has been up there, that's been three stories. That's been up there for a long period of time. So, and we have an existing tower up there that's, that's, that's pretty much visible. We have another two-story building or three-story building, two-story building, the mental health home that's up there.
The water tower.
And we did get one question. Yeah, no, there's an actual.
Telecommunication show.
We did have one, one concern from a next-door neighbor on the other side, which is on the, on the east side of the building in terms of the structure being visible from his, from his facility and overlooking upon. We addressed those questions. Yeah, I forget the name of the individual, but he has frontage on Route thirty-two.
Could you clarify in this?
Excuse me. Sure, if you want to go to the first view, I think that's probably the better view here. So. So that's the building, that is correct.
But that's not the long side. That's not the side of the building that required.
Looking at it from this.
There is another one that looks back this way. I don't know if that captures the whole length of the building.
Yeah.
I just, there's, so this is at the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
But, yeah, so none of these actually show.
Shows right here, let's see.
All right, you want to see?
Oh, I'm sorry. So these were just going, you had these as you were.
There's a little.
Vantage points here.
You see the little vent, yeah, yeah. Oh, no, wait, that's the wrong one. It's this one for this picture.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so that's like looking up.
But I mean, if you, if you think about the views of anybody even driving through this facility, I mean, if you go over the loop, you start this, you do that, going through a loop. So really, this end of it, it's really not the more, more visible point, you know, from a, from a building.
Yeah, yeah, the other people going there are people that are actually going to that.
People are parked here, and you're really gonna see that. So you can't really capture that, that scale very much at all.
It's somewhat unfortunate that shows on a building that size to go with a flat roof. Makes it look like a hospital, but just saying.
I'm looking at using solar for some of those.
That's.
And so this is, is it being designed essentially as a ballasted flat roof? Yeah, no, I'm just talking about the entire project that being designed to be basically a green. So you are putting photovoltaics.
That's, that's the game plan, and all electric, so no gas, so no cost of fuels.
And you said solar panel.
That's, that's for the flat roofs. These have pitch roofs in here, so they.
Yeah, I saw that.
But I mean, they're all electric, the solar's gonna, yeah, okay, it's gonna help offset some of it.
So they individually, they individually heated and cooled?
Yes.
So heat pumps? All right, not that that matters, okay. Any other questions?
Heat pumps don't work.
If they're in a, if they're in a good envelope, it's not a problem, yeah. So.
Minus twenty degrees.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We are, um, this was, you know, suboptimal to have to be in this position. It would have been, it would have been nice to have dealt with this before all of the approvals and the rezoning and everything. But that is the, those are the cards we've been dealt. So we have to decide whether or not we want to provide the thirty-three-foot exception that they, that they need.
I mean, I'd recommend you guys go through each and agree on the criteria and comment amongst you on each of those criterias to start with, you know, whether or not desire will change.
Yeah, well, we've been tucking on them throughout this whole discussion, but we can do that exercise. I mean, it's not gonna affect, it's not gonna affect the neighborhood. The neighborhood, the neighborhood unto itself.
But I mean, this, just to be clear, this is not visible from any neighborhood.
Visible from the nursing facility.
Right.
And then people, yeah, I mean, it's a pretty institutional facility.
What's the length of the building and the nursing facility?
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know.
It's a big building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just.
It's free. Yeah.
So, of course, number two, we've been talking, we've asked a number of questions, you know, can the benefits sought or achieved by any other method? You're saying that pretty much this was really the only, the only feasible solution to.
Well, to put eighty units, yeah.
What ends up happening is open space on the site, and you're gonna have more disturbed area on the site. So it's trade-off, and then you're gonna lose some operational efficiencies as well.
Yes, I understand. You get two buildings, it's more expensive.
And also in terms of the decline.
Yeah, I would, I mean, as an aside, I would imagine, I would, I would put some manner of faith in the planning board to have had that discussion. Yeah, I imagine that happened.
Is that the same planning?
Yeah, well.
I'm just. The building's gonna be a hundred and ninety-three, three feet.
This, this way, it's only one leg.
One leg, yeah, right, one leg. So, and, and the, remind me, it was one sixty?
One sixty.
One sixty is. Thirty-three.
So, so they're asking for a twenty percent, you know, it's, you know, I mean, one could argue it's, it's somewhat substantial, but in the, in the, in the scheme of things.
I mean, especially based on where it is.
Exactly.
I don't, I don't think it's fantastic, it's substantial.
I mean, it's, we're overlaying an old antiquated coat over top of this.
Yeah.
So, um, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the environmental condition. Not seeing any of that. And, yeah, I mean, it was self-created, but to solve problems, right? All right. For the record, I'm gonna ask if there is a motion to either.
I'll make a motion to a pro.
I'll second.
So, um.
Is there anybody going, all right?
Mary.
Oh.
Mary, say, I'll second.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor? On a gentleman, you have your variance.
Thank you. On a procedural, kind of going forward, when these kinds of things come up, what, um, is there a way that we can collaborate with the planning board so that it kind of inform us that this might be coming down the pipe so that we can pay more attention to what's, to the habits being sent.
It's kind of a planning board conversation.
Yeah, I feel like we probably would have, would have watched a planning board meeting or two if we knew this was coming down.
Yeah, exactly. And do they, did they have posted, was it?
And so that stuff's all posted, and honestly, they're all on the YouTube channel.
The daily agreement not delivered, so I can't see it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but we don't know necessarily, and that's gonna come here, right? So once the question comes up, which we, if Sue's coming to you and saying this might have to go in front of the CBA, at least notify us so we can say, all right, let's pay attention to this project. So we don't have to ask all these questions prior to the answer.
This shouldn't get circulated, you didn't coordinate it.
No, but that's it.
So you should have got a lead agency circulation.
Yeah.
Right?
If we did.
I, I.
We did, we did. Okay.
Yeah, well, didn't make it to the board.
Other sheets.
This was over on the seat over there, or I don't know.
Somebody left a map.
He was just sitting down.
Here, chair.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Completive loss, sorry.
Thank you. Maybe get that here, so. Uh, can I have a motion to close?
I'll second, here you go.
We have done.
Done.
Is everybody there soon?
I saw.
We need to close the meeting. We need to close the meeting. Although, can we, we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, hold on a second, yeah.
We don't have anything else.
Well, I have something, I have something. I don't ever want to be put in that situation. That pissed me off.
I don't understand, they're still recording, just me.
Okay, so adjourn the meeting.
Well, all in favor?
All in favor.
All right, all right, we're done.
I don't want to be put in that position. I don't want to be put in that position again.